All right, good evening. We're going to get started here. We have reconvened from closed session, and I'd like to make the following closed-session disclosures. By a four-to-zero vote with Councilmember Spees absent, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the cases of Faux versus County of Sacramento and all, and Torres v. City of Elk Grove and all, as identified by the case numbers on the City Council meeting agenda. And by a four-zero vote with Councilmember Spees absent, the City Council also authorized the City Attorney's Office to initiate litigation in one matter. The name of the defendants and details are not subject to disclosure at this time. Once litigation is filed, this information will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. So with that, I will adjourn the special meeting at 6:04. And at this time, I will call to order the regular Elk Grove City Council meeting. Today is Wednesday, April 27, 2022. It is 6:04 PM. Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, April 29, at 1:00 PM, and Sunday, May 1, at noon. It is being closed captioned. It will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting when you are not speaking. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular noticed agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. Those speakers for other items are encouraged to sign up for those individual items. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a speaker card. Those are the blue cards, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the agenda item. With that, we will move over to the roll call. And I'll commence the roll call with Councilmember Winn.
Yeah.
Councilmember Spees is absent. Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suen.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right. We will move on to our Pledge of Allegiance. I invite, let's see, we'll have Chief Davis. Would you please do the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, we will observe a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda. May I get a motion?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Next item, closed session. Mr. Clerk?
For a regular meeting, there are no closed-session items on this agenda. That'll move us on to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item 4.1, which is Presentation of the 2022 Mayor's Volunteer Awards.
All right. This is exciting stuff here. All right, April is National Volunteer Month, a month dedicated to recognizing the importance of volunteering and honoring the significant contributions that volunteers make to our community. One of the honors I have as mayor is to recognize Elk Grove residents who volunteer their time and talent to make Elk Grove a better place to call home. Our annual Mayor's Volunteer Awards recognizes residents in six different categories. With so many deserving nominations submitted each year, it can be really difficult to choose. I want to thank the review panel who helped me to choose this year's winners. The panelists were our Vice Mayor Darin Sun, Kristin Lawrence, Juan Almanza, Jahaira Bolanos, Rod Brewer, Trina Burt, Lad Casillas, Jenny Fulp, Sylvia Palma, and Mackenzie Weezer. Before I announce this year's winners, I'd like to take a moment to recognize Jay Patel, Kenny Rüdelsberger, and the Elk Grove Garden Club. These people were given honorable mention by the selection committee for their dedication and outstanding contributions to our community. We appreciate their service, especially during the events this past year. They will undoubtedly be considered for an award in the future for the good work that they do. Now let me announce the winners of 2022. In the category of residents, neighborhoods, and community groups, the winner was Mark Hedlund, who was nominated by Nora Legg. Mark is a founding member and serves as President of the Board of Directors for Uplift People of Elk Grove, which helps families and individuals create more abundant lives by breaking the cycle of poverty with a comprehensive, holistic approach to build lives with abundance. He also serves on Elk Grove Heart, Homeless Assistance Resource Team, Board of Directors, and has been the co-director of the Elk Grove Winter Sanctuary, providing emergency nightly shelter and hot meals for homeless adults during the winter months. Mark is the longtime master of ceremonies for the Strauss Festival of Elk Grove and was honored as Elk Grove Citizen of the Year in 2011. Unfortunately, Mark is out of the country and cannot be here to accept this award. But his daughter, Christina Whitehead, is here to accept on his behalf. Please join me in recognizing Mark. Yes, you may come up.
Thank you. My name is Krista Whitehead, and I'm here to accept the award on behalf of my staff who is... Traveling in Germany right now. Lucky man. And so he wrote a quick speech for me to share with you. Dear Madam Mayor Singh Allen and Honorable Councilmembers, I must say I was stunned when I received the email from City Hall notifying me of this honor. I was and am also humbled as I work with many other hard-working volunteers in various community organizations who frankly are more deserving than I. In Elk Grove, we are blessed to have so many dedicated volunteers to serve those in need and to make Elk Grove a better place to live. We are so fortunate that while our city grows, in many ways, we maintain a small-town community feeling. It is our privilege that in some small way, Beth and I can contribute to that. I apologize for not being able to attend this presentation, but please accept my heartfelt thanks for this honor. Sincerely, Mark Hedlund. Thank you.
Please give them our best, Krista. Congratulations.
Thank you. And then we'll do a group picture as well at the end with everyone. In the category of social and community services, the winner is Gina, and I, please forgive me if I mispronounce it, Thielk? Thielk? Nominated by Wendy Cross. Gina began volunteering with ExHope in 2010 with a passion for serving at-risk youth. Her commitment has been a catalyst that has enlisted more partners, including soccer clubs, EGUSD, and local businesses. She has grown local services in Elk Grove by over 300% by making it possible to provide needed items to children in foster care and other at-risk youth, including unsheltered youth, teen moms, and others who need support. Beyond Gina's commitment to at-risk youth, she stays involved in the Elk Grove community by hosting donation drives, being a team manager for her son's soccer team, and hosting special events for students. Without Gina's commitment to Elk Grove, more than 350 at-risk youth would have been without school supplies, baby items, and clothing for school this last year. Please join me in recognizing Gina. Welcome, Gina.
Thank you. Well, I don't have a speech prepared. I've never won anything like this, so it's been, it came to surprise, and it also is a great honor. I've lived in Elk Grove since 2001. And growing, my children growing up, I always loved to volunteer. And coming across ExHope, and Wendy is a dear friend of mine. I've just, my heart has grown for the mission and serving the youth and just making as big of a difference as we can. We are now in Elk Grove. We finally have a facility. And so just building relationships and just making as big of an impact as we can now. And we look forward to seeing you on the 12th for our open house. So, thank you so much, and we look forward to growing and making a bigger difference. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Congrats on the move.
Great job. The next is in the category of arts, culture, and heritage. The winner is Chris Matteo, nominated by Dane Newson. I've known Chris for a number of years and have admired his service to the community and cultural organizations. And, you know, we recognized Chris at our last meeting as a recipient for his kidney transplant. And he still fights for this community, not only his health, but he's such a true champion. And we just so value him and are grateful that he has called Elk Grove home. So I would like to call up Mr. Chris Matteo and recognize, Chris, for all of your invaluable services to making this community great, there's a long list of organizations that you are a part of, and we're just so grateful that you continue to serve.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Singh Allen, the City Council, City of Elk Grove, all the panelists, everybody that lives here. I mean, I don't think of it as just volunteering. I think of it as, you know, there are people that came way before us. There are leaders like you all up there that are doing so much work. And I feel like this is just something I have to do because we all have families and kids to take care of. We have people who have nobody to take care of. And whatever we can do to serve them in any capacity, it's just, it's a gift. I mean, I've shared with you all, this is my second life, and the first one was spent doing whatever I could. And I'm hoping to be able to do more because of the second chance. And thank you guys for this incredible, like, my counterparts had a surprise recognition. I was like, what am I getting invited to? This is great. Volunteer for what? Like, I have no idea what I did. But yeah, I really appreciate everybody, everybody that works so hard to do so much stuff, and I'm just following people's footsteps. We're looking out for our kids and our families, especially for my own family who are here tonight, my son Alan and my wife Elaine. So, but we do what we can for people we love, and that extends into the community. And I'm just hoping that we can do more. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And I would be remiss if I didn't give an honorable mention to your wife, who I got to know with the Elk Grove Unified School District in being a true champion for equity and particularly ensuring that our people of color, different communities, are represented in curriculum. So thank you to the Matteo family. You're a tough act to follow. Thank you. Next is in the category of sports and recreation. The winner is Patsy Kuzenza, nominated by Andrew Donary. Patsy goes above and beyond to help thousands of young Elk Grove soccer players. She continues to raise money to help athletes and their families who are trying to make ends meet. Patsy is truly remarkable person who has done an outstanding job in our sports community for years. Please join me in recognizing Patsy.
Hi. I want to thank everybody. I, to me, there is nothing better than to volunteer. My husband and I have been in Elk Grove for over 30 years. We started out with volunteering as team managers and coach, and it continued on. We also help with other sports and other community events throughout Elk Grove and feel that, you know, something that, it's just part of us that we've always done and feel like, you know, something that we just want to continue on, and I thank you all for the honor. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so the next is in the category of service organizations and groups. The winner is Mica the Comfort Dog, nominated by Jay Reed. I've actually met Mica a few times. Mica and his human support, support team show up at traumatic events and bring comfort to people. He visits seniors in assisted-care facilities and makes regular visits to 911 call centers and first responders in their stations and on extended incidents to bring encouragement and support. He visits local schools, and he's used by counselors to bring special comfort, comfort to kids who are going through tough times and having difficulty adjusting to school. Mica regularly works six hours per day, six days per week. When he is deployed, he works 12-hour days. I hope he's getting overtime for that. Please join me in thanking and recognizing Mica and his team. All right. There's my buddy.
Well, we humbly thank you for this recognition and honor. It's, it's a privilege to be a part of this wonderful community. And this is definitely a team effort, as you can see. And we just hope that we've been able to bring a small difference to a growing community. And it's just been a blessing to us. And we've had Mica for about two and a half years, and we just hope that, and we believe that he's made a difference. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you. Beautiful.
Our next winner, our Young Volunteer of the Year, Monique Tapala. Monique has been collecting recyclable materials to sell back and purchase animal supplies to donate to the Elk Grove Animal Shelter since she was 12 years old. She is now 14. It began as a sixth-grade project that has just kept going. Monique has vowed to help others, like her four-year-old rescued boxer Hershey, to thrive. Her whole family helps her to collect recyclable plastic bottles and cans. Please join me in recognizing Monique. Yep, you may come up.
Hi. I'm not very good at public speaking, but thank you to the council for awarding me this. Oh, okay.
It's okay.
I just wanted to give a quick thanks to my family for helping me pursue this dream. And I hope that in the coming years, as I go into high school, I'll continue with this. And I'm hoping that Hershey's Happy Helpers will grow into something that will really help the city. So, thank you.
You're already having tremendous impact, leading by an example and a shining star here. I can't wait to see what you do in the coming years. So, thank you. At this time, let's recognize all of our winners, Mark Hedlund, Gina Thielk, Chris Matteo, Patsy Kuzenza, Mica the Comfort Dog, and Monique Tapala for the significant impact on the quality of life you are making in our great city. I want to call you all up so we can take a group picture. All right, so next up is our recognition of the Youth Mixed Martial Arts Championships 2021 Team USA Participants and Certificate of Achievement for the bronze medalist Adam Maldonado Jr., so I'm having my colleagues here assist. So I will read, we have a certificate of achievement for Adam Troy Maldonado Jr., and I will read what it says. The 2021 Bronze Medalist Youth Mixed Martial Arts World Championships Bulgaria. On behalf of the Elk Grove City Council, we are pleased to congratulate Adam Maldonado Jr., representing the United States and earning the bronze medal in the under-14-year-old mixed martial arts bracket at the July 30 through August 1, 2021, International Mixed Martial Arts Federation Mixed Martial Arts World Championships in Sofia, Bulgaria. Adam Maldonado Jr. continues on his path to achieve in competition, earning national titles in 2021 and 2022. We are so very proud of the guidance and support displayed by the coaches, team participants, and parents. Adam's excellence in competition is testimony to his dedication and hard work as we look forward to a bright future for this ascending star athlete. We're going to do the presentations together, and then we'll come down.
Yeah. Adam, congratulations. Are your teammates here with you?
Uh, yes.
All right, come on up. We've got Cross, Betzold, Alex Mallett, Bernardo Antonio Robles, and Jose Luis Vasquez III. Yeah, on behalf of the council, we just want to congratulate all of you for all the exemplary challenges you guys have exhibited, all that you've accomplished so far. You know, mixed martial arts is not something we typically hear about, right? A lot of times you hear about baseball, or football, or basketball. But you guys are into sport that has, needs so much dedication, perseverance, and hard work, and it's one-on-one, you know? It's just you guys in there. So I have a great ton of respect for all that you guys have done. And at the same time, like every other sport, you guys are learning about perseverance and hard work and getting over hardships and then embracing your wins. So all these great lessons are going to take you far in life, and we're really confident that you're going to go even farther in this sport. So I'm going to just take a moment to read some of the things that we highlighted in the resolution, and you can read the whole thing later. But whereas the 2021 IMMAF Youth MMA Championships for 12- to 18-year-olds took place in Sofia, Bulgaria, that's incredible, from July 30 to August 1, 2021. And whereas the Bulgarian capital city saw 24 nations from all corners of the globe bringing an approximate number of 369 athletes to the event. And whereas the United States was represented by numerous athletes and included competitors from the Sacramento region, led by bronze medal effort of Adam Maldonado Jr. and the talents of team members Cross Betzold, Alex Mallett, Bernardo Antonio Robles, and Jose Luis Vasquez III. Now, therefore be it resolved at the City Council, the City of Elk Grove, hereby joins the community in recognizing the talent and teamwork of our regional 2021 IMMAF Youth MMA Championships competitors, commending the coaches, families, and team members that displayed a collaborative spirit, building international goodwill as ambassadors in a competitive forum, and fostering the open, dependable, and progressive vision of IMMAF and has been supporting mixed martial arts competition on this day, 27 April, 2022. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
You guys want to say anything?
We got, we got certificates here.
Yeah. If you want to say something, yeah.
Thanks to our coaches, Coach Anthony and Coach Quan John, for being there with us the whole training camp. Thanks to our families as well. Wouldn't be here without them. And yeah.
Thank you to my family, my friends, and my coaches, especially Coach Anthony and Quan John. I wouldn't be here without them, and let's, let's do this again this year.
Yes.
All right.
I'd like to also thank my coaches, Anthony and Quan John, and especially my teammates, Tony, Adam, and Cross, and everyone who couldn't be here. But we all get better, you know, and we're just going to keep doing it. We're going to be out there, and you guys will probably see us on TV one day.
All right. Forward to it.
Hi, guys. How you doing? Professor Anthony Vivins and Quan Jonathan Kalazar were the head coaches for this team. I'd like to say a few words, if I could, about the 2021 team as a whole. This specific team faced everything that we faced as adults, which was the pandemic. Well, many of us struggled on how life was going to work and how we were going to view it. I got to view it from the youth's eyes. I got to feel it from here. What was always such a bright future for the first time seemed to be dimming. Not only did they train hard to make nationals, but they seemed to be training for much more at that point in time, which was to live, to live. Due to international travel restraints, we lost most of our first and second seeded athletes for the United States team, but many other athletes stepped up to do the job we set out to do and headed to the country of Bulgaria. This specific world team will always hold a memory in my heart because of this. We fought against many countries, but to fight against Ireland, Ukraine, and Russia was the greatest experience for them because we all made friends and family after. Every time they fought, they fought with diligence, respect, and tremendous pride for this country. Each ending, whether win or loss, we carried the flag proudly on our backs and never let it touch the ground. For that, these guys will always have my deepest respects. I'd like to thank them for their blood, sweat, and tears in service as American athletes. Next, I want to talk about Adam Maldonado Jr. I'm going to refer to him as Junior because that title, Junior, is important for young males if you have such a strong father to look up to, which he has. Plus, it's a moment for me to haze him a little bit and tease him. Now that I know his middle name is Troy, I'll be using that as ammo as well. When I first met Junior, I knew I was looking at a long-life martial artist regardless of his competition career. When I asked him how far he wanted to take this, he said what very few have said to me with conviction, and that he was destined for the pro stage. He came well-groomed and disciplined with the karate base, and I love that because I also have roots in karate, and this was going to be so fun to build him. At first, I noticed he had a bit of performance anxiety, which we worked on consistently and churned out promotional youth MMA titles within a year underneath the House of Moon banner. Adam's perseverance is unrivaled. His indomitable spirit is also unrivaled. We have walked the walk a thousand times. We have walked the walk a thousand times together, and I'm prepared to walk a million more. Adam Junior is a born leader, and soon we will call on him to lead us into the future. So thank you, the City of Elk Grove, for believing in these kids and allowing them to have a platform for other young boys and girls to hear their stories. It could just give them the lift they need to fight for their futures. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Coach.
All right, here we go. One, two, three. Do one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Anytime.
Thank you, Coach, for those powerful words. They were very moving and inspiring, and you can feel all of the love and the pride. So congratulations one more time to all of you, and it takes a village. So to the parents, the coaches, friends, and family that were there to support our young athletes along the way, thank you for all that you do every single day. All right, so we will move on to our next recognition, a proclamation declaring April 2022 as Fair Housing Month. Councilmember Hume will help present that proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is a proclamation recognizing Fair Housing Month, April 2022. I won't read all of the whereas', but it's a fair housing month is celebrated each April across the United States. This year, we're celebrating the fifty-fourth anniversary of the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968. And in recognizing Fair Housing Month, we reflect in a timely way on the importance in communities, states, and the nation to affirm civil rights and oppose bigotry and discrimination. And the City of Elk Grove affirms every American has the right to live with dignity in any area they desire without fear of discrimination and supports state and federal protection against discrimination in the sale and rental of housing. And I'd just like to say that I think we are fortunate in Elk Grove that just about every street in town is a crayon box of people living on that street. And I would think we all take a lot of pride in that, but it is somewhat tragic to think that that has not always been the case and that people were not always welcomed in every neighborhood. And so this proclamation recognizes that we had to put our foot down at one point, and now we're just recognizing that we continue to stand behind that effort and stand behind the commitment to fair housing and the affirmatively promoting the policies and practices that continue to allow people to live in the neighborhood of their choice. And so I believe we have Ryan Reyes, Taheri Kraft, and John Foley. Are they here?
Sacramento self-help housing.
Yeah, Sacramento self-help housing in Project Sentinel?
Yes. My name is Olga Tulaidan, and I'm from Sacramento self-help housing. Taheri and John are not here.
Okay.
But I do have Ryan with me. And Mayor and council members, I would like to thank you for recognizing Fair Housing Month and your ongoing support for Renters' Helpline. Renters' Helpline receives calls daily from tenants wanting to know their rights and discuss possible discrimination cases. Each month, we're receiving over seven hundred calls and averaging forty-seven referrals to Project Sentinel to screen for fair housing violations. Since January this year, Renters' Helpline received one hundred forty calls from Elk Grove and five of them with possible fair housing violations. We continue to see that discrimination in housing is an ongoing issue, and it's preventing residents to get a home. Renters' Helpline is dedicated to protect the rights of renters and promoting fair housing. As I'm going to pass over to Ryan Reyes from Project Sentinel, he's an attorney, I would like to thank you again for acknowledging the fifty-fourth anniversary of Fair Housing Act and supporting Renters' Helpline.
Hello, my name is Ryan Reyes. I'm a staff attorney with Project Sentinel, and I'd like to thank the city for recognizing Fair Housing Month. Just a brief background on Fair Housing Month, it does recognize the passage of the Fair Housing Act. What led to the passage of that was a week before it passed was the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King. The act commemorated basically that struggle for civil rights in that era. We do continue, I'd like to underscore specifically that, you know, fair housing, it expands. One of the protected categories in fair housing is voucher holders, and we, I'd like to specifically just thank the City of Elk Grove, specifically the staff, for working with us to identify situations where voucher holders aren't being allowed to rent a place because that is now protected under fair housing rules. And we continue to work with the City of Elk Grove on that. So at a time when housing is really a number-one concern, if not statewide, nationwide, we thank the city for making this a priority and making it, ensuring that, you know, housing discrimination doesn't become just one or the another barrier towards finding housing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you for all of you. All right, our next recognition is a proclamation recognizing May as Bike Month. Assisting is Councilmember Winn.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm actually really excited to do this one because I run a nonprofit organization in town, and during the month of May, I always select a few days where we shut down our entire agency, all three locations, and staff were able to spend the day going biking. And now, we're not in those thousand-dollar bikes that you all have, we're in like cruisers, and we bike from South Sacramento all the way to West Sacramento, to downtown, through the trails, to the Capitol. And our very own vice mayor has joined in some of these activities as well, too, and so I completely understand how important it is. But during this month of May, what we'd like to do is recognize our very own cyclists here in our city. And I'm not going to read the entire whereas', but I will point out a couple of important items in here. So May is National Bike Month, and it's promoted by the League of American bicyclists and celebrated in communities from coast to coast. And since 2004, May is Bike Month has been celebrated across the Sacramento region. So Eldorado, Placer, Sacramento, Sutter, Yolo, and Yuba Counties all have bike events planned throughout the month. And what we saw during COVID is that everybody went out there and got a bike. You couldn't find a bike for the life of you, even if you checked on Craigslist. So Bike Day became every day, not just during the month of May. And it was wonderful for me to see our trails being used and families coming out there and actually utilizing their bikes to get to and from things like the parks, or even going out to get coffee, or going to the nearest supermarket or whatnot. And studies have shown that when an individual replaces one car trip per day with a bike trip, that person reduces their carbon emission from transportation by sixty-seven percent. So we can all do our parts to contribute to a healthier future for our planet and for our nation. During the month of May, which is Bike Month, we're asking for folks to utilize their bikes and go on those short trips to go get a coffee, or if you're going to go to the park or whatnot, make sure you use your bike. However, one of the things that we are pushing, though, is that during Bike to Work Week, which is taking place May 16th to the 27th, and that during Bike to School Day on Wednesday, May 4th, we hope to see many of our residents here utilized during that day. Now, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaim the month of May in 2020 as May is Bike Month in Elk Grove. Accordingly, we encourage our citizens to join with their communities in participating of local and regional bike is Bike Month activity. Sign the entire Council of Elk Grove. And we'd like to present this to Carl Okamoto and the members of the Elk Grove Cycling Club.
They're here in their bike gear. You probably biked over.
Did you guys carpool to get here, or what?
Y'all biked here.
Rode seventeen miles before we came.
Carl, would you like to make some comments?
Actually, I'd like to introduce you to our founder of the club, Scott Halsey, and he has a few words to say. Hello, as Carl said, my name is Scott Halsey, and I'm with the Elk Grove Cycling Club. The Elk Grove Cycling Club joins the City of Elk Grove in celebrating May as Bike Month. There are many reasons to ride a bike, to enjoy a lifelong sport, to promote cleaner air, to save money on gasoline, to enjoy the outdoors, and to lessen traffic congestion. Bike riding is simply fun to do, and we're pleased that the city has declared its support for this fun activity in our hometown of Elk Grove. Thank you very much.
We appreciate you guys.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, we appreciate it. Glad to get down to this side.
How are you?
How many are in the club? A lot more than you. Oh, my gosh.
Okay, here we go. Okay. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for biking.
And I think we're going to see you guys out sometime soon, riding the trails with the Elk Grove Trail Committee.
Oh, that was great. That's right, I heard about this.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you all so much. Appreciate it.
The council's not committing us to some marathon or something. All right, we'll move along on the agenda. Next up is our public comment.
For members of the participating audience, they may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less if a large number of requests are received on a particular subject. The City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter has been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a specific response to a question are encouraged to contact any member of the council or the city manager at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, there was one written comment that came in that's actually here to accompany our one individual signed up, it's Ms. Wheat. She did submit the item that she'd like displayed on screen, which was distributed to staff and council prior earlier in the week. And I'll pull that up as we invite Ms. Wheat up to the speaker podium.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I've hung on to this article for two years. It was in the National Wildlife in April and May of 2020. And to my surprise, I've discovered that one of our home builders here, Taylor Morrison, is building on its reputation to be environmentally friendly. While I know they have a generous heart, as they've contributed to many of our local campaigns and elections here, and I'm thinking, and just throwing it out there, that I believe that we could develop that partnership and really have some wonderful communities built from them wanting to continue that reputation of environmentally friendly. They have built across the nation, they have put in and helped to preserve over, wanting to preserve over eight thousand acres. And what piqued my interest in this is one project they had was they took some farmland that had degraded and was just used for cattle grazing, and they totally restored it and brought back wildlife and nature to that area. As we know, during this last three years, being outside has been something that everybody's been able to do with COVID, and I believe that's going to continue in the future. So I bring this to you, knowing that Taylor Morrison can build really good projects if we say that that's something we want here in Elk Grove. We have wonderful staff that have written grants, that's how some of our paths, our bike areas have been completed, the trails. And so I know that we can look into some grants, and with their creativity and your leadership in coordinating with Taylor Morrison, we can hold them to that standard of being an environmentally friendly developer. We don't have to have our big-box communities, we can have something else. So as you're doing something that I really didn't want to have happen, was developing eight thousand more acres, I'd like to think that you will look into doing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheat. Any other public comments?
I believe that's the only individual we have signed up under general public comment.
All right, then I will go ahead and close the public comment opportunity and move on to our next item. Our General Administration Information City Managers Report.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Baron, members of the City Council. Jason Bierman, happy to present this brief report for you. First, I want to recognize some outstanding projects we've been recognized for. Public Works Staff recently accepted the American Society of Civil Engineers Region Nine 2021 Outstanding Roadway and Highway Project of the Year Award last week for the Bilby Road and Big Horn Extension Project. Staff has also been notified that to preserve District 56 will receive the 2021 ASC Sacramento Section Outstanding Parks and Recreation Project during a banquet on May 20th. Please join me congratulating staff for the outstanding work on these projects. Recycling Waste Division recently received the Sacramento Area Sustainable Business Program Recertification of Achievement for the Special Waste Collection Center by the Business Environmental Resource Center. Burke promotes businesses and other organizations in the region that pledge to adopt environmentally-friendly practices and conserve resources. This honor recognizing the facility's continuing commitment to environmentally-friendly practices. Public Works Recycling and Waste Division and the Police Department will team up to host a Prescription Drug Takeback Day this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Police Department Service Center. This event will provide residents with a safe, convenient, and responsible means of disposing prescription drugs at no cost. Please visit the city's website for more details. The Elk Grove Fine Arts Center is introducing a new Festival of the Arts this Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. at the Old Town Plaza. This free event will offer fine arts booths, live music, food, and wine, a youth art show, and a kid's zone. This event is sponsored by the Elk Grove Arts Commission. Also at Old Town Plaza, they will host the return of a weekly farmer's market beginning this Sunday and every Sunday through November from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Shop local and purchase fresh local produce, gourmet foods, and handcrafted items. The weekly market will come in addition to the Thursday Market at District 56. Get details on special events and weekly highlights for the Old Town Market by following the Old Town Elk Grove Farmer's Market on Facebook. As the weather warmed, city staffs were preparing to host and support a number of community events, including Party on the Palms scheduled for May 14th, Running of the Elk May 15th, Big Truck Day May 18th, the Iris Awards May 18th, as well as weekly and monthly markets. To get more information about upcoming events, visit the city's event webpage or subscribe to our events email list on the city's webpage. And finally, Elk Grove is a great place to live with an amazing quality of life, as we all know. Together, we can responsibly plan for future generations. We cannot do this without input and collaboration with the community that we serve. So we invite all members of the public to visit elkgrovelife.com to participate in a survey and tell us what's most important to you. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Bierman. Any questions for Mr. Bierman? All right, seeing none, thank you for that report. We'll move on.
you for that report. We'll move on to our next item, which is our consent calendar. I would like to open up the public comment opportunity. Seeing none. All right, we're gonna close the public comment. And um seeing there's no questions, I'd like to call for a motion.
Okay, I'll move consent.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We have no public hearings this evening, so we are going on to item nine point one. Receive information and provide direction regarding the allocation of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three event sponsorship grant program funds. Welcome, Ms. Moreno.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Let me open my presentation here. There we go. Can we all see that? My name's Jody Moreno. I am the Community Events and Special Projects Coordinator for the City of Elk Grove, and I'm here tonight to share with you the F Y twenty-two, twenty-three event sponsorship grant recommendations for funding for events that are making a comeback this year, finally, right? The Event Sponsorship Grant Program, here's some basics about it. It was started in two thousand and twelve. It's supported by our general fund, and you know, it was established with eligibility criteria to ensure that sponsorship funding is focused on events with citywide significance that meet our city goals. It is limited to nonprofit organizations with events that happen right here in Elk Grove, and any programming and operations are ineligible, and I think you already reviewed those through the C S G and C B D G funding um um just recently. You know, we talked about events making a comeback, COVID-nineteen, there's still an impact on our grantees, right? We had a lot of events canceled over the last two years, and even in this past year, there's still an effect left over with people trying to plan during the pandemic. And for this last fiscal year that we're about to wrap up, we had thirty-five events with cash and in-kind funding, and today eleven of them have canceled or changed their plans, and I suspect maybe a few more before the end of June thirtieth, and we're really sad for them. A lot of them, though, were really resilient and came up with different ways to do their events, did a drive-through dinner, or did a box dinner, or something like that. So we're really proud of our grantees that have done that. I mean, you can see some of the ones there that I've listed that had to cancel and/or change, but we're excited that they're gonna come back this year. The way the application process runs is we release the application in mid-January. We advertise it in the citizen, on our website, social media. We directly emailed all past recipients for since the program started, actually. Um, everybody was submitting online through an online um grant program, and they were due February twenty-fifth. And they do still include some options that address potential COVID-nineteen, should the state go backwards, because we know, you know, very unpredictable. So if things do happen, we can work with grantees to try and help them still run some events. And just a note that all grantees must be in good standing with the Secretary of State and Registry of Charitable Trust, and that's prior to entering into a contract, as well as we go through the contract process and prior to invoicing with any of our grantees. We will be checking their status to make sure that they are all registered and up to date. For this year, we did receive thirty-four eligible applications from nonprofits. The total requested exceeded five hundred thousand dollars. That is with cash and in-kind services from police, public works, integrated waste, and facilities. We did have a multi-department review, and that included members from City Hall, as well as C S D Fire, C S D Parks and Rec, police, public works, public affairs, facilities, and other people. And the things that we looked at was what is the event concept? What's the feasibility? You know, what did they do in the past? Can they attract regional visitors? Is their budget reasonable and the level of impact that it has here in the city? I'm not gonna go through all of them. They're all listed here. You've also received a spreadsheet, but I'll just kind of hit on some of the highlights and maybe mention some of the new ones for this year. So Walk to Defeat A L S is a new one uh with us this year, which is great. They're doing a walk at Elk Grove Park. We thought that would be a great one to support. Artners was new with us last year, and they had applied for four small events, and we noticed that they did an amazing job with those events, really blew them up. And this year, they've applied for two very much larger events that we're excited to see come to fruition, Dia de los Muertos and a Blacklight Mardi Gras. So we're excited to see what happens with those. Of course, Gobble Wobble will be coming back. American Legion Post Two Three Three was really affected this year with COVID and the past two years, so we're excited for the return of that. And I know that the community will be excited for Veterans Day Parade to come back. I know we've been missing that one a lot. Uh, Holiday of Lights Parade, that's a beloved parade here in the city. And Elk Grove Fine Arts, Jason mentioned the Festival of the Arts this Saturday, so they have applied for their second one. We hope you all go this Saturday. It'll be their first one. It's gonna be a really nice event, and I think it's going to expand kind of their reach in the city and get more people interested in the arts. Run for Hunger on July fourth in the morning, and then, of course, the fireworks at night. Uh, the Elk Grove Historical Society has um joined us again, and this year they actually applied for Old Fashioned Christmas, which we thought would be great, because that runs over four different weeks and can have a larger impact on visitors coming to see their beautiful display. Bounty on the Boulevard. Exploral Grove actually applied for two new ones. They want to bring a Halloween trick-or-treat event to the Old Town Plaza, which we thought was neat, because there aren't a lot of Halloween events happening in town. And then Uncorked and Uncapped, they held last year for a first-year event, which is a wine and beer festival at the plaza. It was very well done and um very classy. We have our friends from the Elk Grove Animal Shelter for their dinner fundraiser, Paws for a Purpose, Dickens Fair, which actually got to happen this past year. We were very happy for them. Uh, the Kiwanis Club of Elk Grove, a new one, they're doing a carnitas feed at District Fifty-Six. They're actually hosting one, I believe, next month, and that'll be their first one. And then they did apply for the event sponsorship grant, and we thought that was worthy. And also a new one, a pickleball classic, and we know that's becoming very popular. And we're very excited to see the Strauss Festival make a comeback. They did do a Strauss Showcase this past year at District Fifty-Six, but I know they're missing their three-day event at the park, so it'll be nice to see them come back. The total recommended cash and in-kind allocations between cash, police, public works, and facility use is two hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. And we're looking forward to your direction on how we should move forward with these grants. And if you have any questions?
Um, so I wanted to thank you for that excellent report. Um, there was a green sheet that was submitted um later this afternoon, and I wanted to bring it up for discussion. I hope my council colleagues have had an opportunity to review it. Um, I did speak with the person who submitted it, um, Mr. Jason Jong, and he was, he didn't quite, you know, read um fully tonight's agenda, so he was looking for funding for an event that's coming up in um in two weeks. And as far as I can see, it would be the only one recognizing um Asian American Pacific Islander Month, Heritage Month. So while it's not under this um sphere of authority, um I'm wondering what options might be available. So I'd like to ask our um city manager, because I'm sure you've seen the city or the green sheet, and what options do we have?
Mayor, I can address that for you. So it is out of the funding cycle. However, it just did come in this afternoon. Staff and I have had a opportunity to review it briefly. I- if the council is inclined to fund this, uh, you have that authority to do that tonight. I would suggest that it be contingent on staff confirming their eligibility. A preliminary evaluation looks like they are eligible, but we just haven't had time to go through that yet, because we just got it this afternoon. But if that's something the council wants to do despite the out-of-cycle funding, you have that discretion if that's what you'd like.
Well, I would certainly like to see that uh for consideration. Um, again, it would be the only one for Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The ask is only a thousand dollars.
I would support that, Mayor.
I I just, obviously, I'm Asian Pacific Islander, so I support the month. I just want to make sure that we're not starting something where others may come in as well too, and we're coming back at this again. Um, I still have money in my council account. I'd be more than happy to see if I have enough to cover this and say it came from us instead of going outside of what we typically do and opening this up for others to be able to come in as well too, because I could see this being something where um other groups are gonna come in and and say and ask the same thing, and so if we put this one through.
Yeah, I mean, I hear your concerns on that, and that's where we have discretion. I think the benefits of having this be a city event is that we get to advertise it as as part of the sponsorship. And um Jason Jong and um and others that are part of this are known in the community, and and the three of us are going to be participating um in this event. And one of the asks was to, you know, obviously, to um if if they are able to receive the sponsorship of a thousand dollars, um, I'm sure they would welcome additional funding. This was just for the city request and to offset some of their costs, of course. And then to be able to share their event that's coming up in two weeks, and right now, it this is the only one that I'm seeing in the City of Elk Grove. So I I will personally also be supporting um individually, but um but I do think that if if we can, for the city, if they if the organization meets the checklist and criteria, we do have that discretion. And we, as a board, uh, as an authority, have the discretion to review it and if this becomes problematic. But part of that discussion is new groups are going to be coming up, new events will be coming up, and so to just close the door on them altogether because of an arbitrarily deadline, while it's important.
Yeah, we're not closing the door. I just want to be cognizant of this can continue to happen. Like, next week, there may be another event. I happen to know there's gonna be quite a few A P I um events that are gonna be happening. They just haven't put the request in, and so if we're going to say yes to this, I can guarantee there'll be a lot more coming in. And I've personally already contributed five hundred dollars to this already, and I can look through my council account and see if I have a thousand, I'll put it in, and I'll say it's from the city, just so that way we are consistent with this. My only fear, and I'm very supportive of the event, as I said, I've already contributed five hundred. I'd be willing to do another thousand and say we supported this. I just wanted to...
Would that allow for the city logo, though? Not?
Yeah, it'd be fine.
Yeah.
It would be fine, so whether the funding came through individual sources, we would still be able to do it.
It's through the council account.
It would be, it'd be the city's funding. It's 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 um Councilmember Wen's funds as a council member.
Your discretionary, and that's fine.
I, so I I appreciate Councilmember Wen's point, and it's a valid one. And and uh, you know, it's not come in through through the green sheet. I think it mistakenly was thinking it was coming through this regular process, so this is, this is the decision point tonight. We're, we're not looking to, you know, create a future um um circumstances where others may may do this by any means. My only, for me personally, I would love to um give more of my my uh uh budget allocation, but I'm dedicating of all of it for other other nonprofits, big day of giving, scholarship, I mean, everything. So, you know, personally, if if the city manager has the funds for this one specific one, I would, you know, I I don't want to put the burden on you, Councilmember Wen, too, to to do that.
Yeah, and I don't mind it. I'm all for giving them the money. I'm just saying, if we do this, keep in mind that if others come through as well too, we need to also come back and do this as well too. I'm just saying, if we're doing that, that's it. Like, this isn't just the one and only. This isn't a one and only.
So the uniqueness of this is because of the agenda item that we're speaking.
Right.
And because of the way it's worded, for the layman, it could be conceived as, well, this is for this year, although this were, these are allocations for future events. So from, you know, from the outside looking in, um however, we communicate that, that, you know, e- even though I think it it's it's clear, but in rereading it, it's not necessarily. So...
I I think nor- normally that this would never even come before us through the green sheet. It is just, it just...
It's a unique situation for tonight's agenda item.
Yeah, but um, yeah, so to to that point, that that's what would make this unique, in my, my opinion.
So, and I personally plan to contribute, but I would love to see our city contribute a thousand dollars, and we have the funds still for this. Yes?
Um, Mayor and Council, may I, may I chime in?
Yes, please.
Uh, periodically throughout the year, there are times when organizations reach out to the city if they have new events. Um, and the public affairs staff evaluates those to see if they fit within the city's goals and priorities. And um sometimes we do fund them outside of the grant process, and then we educate them on our grant process for future years. We make sure they're on our lists.
Right.
So this would be such an organization that, you know, we do have money set aside for cultural um events and sponsorships, and so this could match with that very nicely.
Perfect.
Um, and this wouldn't be out of line with some of our past practice with new events, right? And we always try to educate event producers on, hey, you have to get in the city's cycle. It's really important, because we don't want all these one-offs.
Right.
But I think that this would be in line with some of our past practice and in line with our goals of promoting diverse community.
Thank you for that, um, for that clarification. And I, what I wanted to do was, you know, while the city manager had the authority, in the interest of transparency, because it was brought before us in in a green sheet, that we had to address it in some capacity, even though conceivably you could have done this on your own anyways. I think it's important, at least for this discussion.
Yeah, and I appreciate Councilmember Wen bringing this that up, because it's very valid, and thank you, Cara, for your clarification, too.
So this would, I'm sorry, this would be similar to when we have culture events, like the Lunar New Year that we hosted. There's fun things set aside for things like that, right? So I think this is exactly what Ms. Wedding said, is it falls in line with some of the...
So we're good?
Yeah, yeah.
So would we have support um from my council colleagues for this?
So procedurally, let me offer a suggestion, because we haven't taken public comment yet. I I would suggest that you not take action on this yet. We'll add it to the list when you get to the point of deliberating and deciding yet. But but if you have council consensus to add it to the list, so to speak, we we could do that.
Okay, very good. So then we'll continue on with our um with our questions, but first we'll see if there are any public comments before we go to my colleagues. I don't see anybody that's signed up.
Correct. And looking over, and just in addition to the uh written comment that came in this afternoon, there was another one earlier in the week, so two written comments on this item. But as I review the system, we don't have any speakers signed up to speak on this item.
All right, so I'll officially close the public comment opportunity. Um, I have a couple of questions. Um, I think we did an excellent job in terms of outreach and communications to the community and nonprofits and that continued partnership that exists. So this just really triggered that, um, is there a gap for newer organization inaugural events and things like that? Um, however, we can address some of that. Uh, if there's some special place where, you know, if you're a new organization, this is your opportunity. Contact us here. Just not want to avoid this uh happening in the future, but more importantly, um, giving to the status quo year after year. We want to be able to to really open up opportunities and new events and things like that as they come up. So however, we put that out for communication, I think.
Definitely. We used our week at a glance and some other new methods this year, too, to reach out and try and get the word out. And I know that Lana and her team did a great job over at District Fifty-Six. When a a renter would come in that was a nonprofit, she would say, hey, have you heard about the event sponsorship grant? And that's how we got the Kiwanis Club. So I think getting the word out through new avenues and things like that are definitely a great way to do it. And Alicia Tut, who does the C B D G, C S G, her and I worked hand in hand in trying to get, worked out too. We did a technical workshop, because we had a new platform this year, and there were people. So we answered all the questions, and we got a lot of new people at that as well. So that was nice.
Yeah, and it's similar to, in my mind, when we had our small business grants and those opportunities where we really expanded our outreach efforts. So along that same um line of thinking, just to be more inclusive, but then also really opening up other opportunities for that outreach. Um, and I'll leave it to the experts on what that looks like. So thank you for that. And then um any of my colleagues' questions for Ms. Moreno?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So uh, we need to provide direction.
So Mayor, members of the council, yes, but we have um one procedural issue to deal with. Councilmember Hume has a conflict of interest for the Oak Grove Regional Scholarship Foundation. He's on the board, so as per usual, it suggests he steps out for a moment. The rest of the council takes action on that, and he can come back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go too far.
Or down. So so with that, it's a pleasure of the councils to how you would like to fund, if at all, the Elk Grove Regional Scholarship Foundation. It looks like they're requesting...
Support staff recommendation?
Yes, absolutely.
We have a motion here?
Support staff's recommendation.
Motion is second. Favor, say aye.
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 Okay, you can bring him back in.
All right, thank you all.
All right, now it's for the rest of the recommendations from staff for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three event sponsorship grant program E S G funds.
I'd like to make...
Including the addition of the thousand dollars we talked about at the top of the item.
No, I think that one is going to a separate one.
Yeah.
It's going to a separate request. That's not a part of this. Am I right?
The funding would be, the funding would be a separate mechanism, but I I think you could vote on the support. But we would, we do want to make sure that we have the opportunity to vet the um organizers.
Subject to vetting.
Yes.
That's right. So so technically, it would be added to this, but for this fiscal year, the event happens in a couple of weeks. It'd be for that timing, subject to confirmation of eligibility, with all of those caveats.
So I'll make a motion for staff recommendation for the remainder of uh of the sponsorship uh grant program funds, and additionally adding uh the uh the the uh event for the um, and I've lost the title now.
That event is called...
I'm gonna have my document opened.
It's from the Sacramento Asian Pacific Cultural Village.
She said.
Asian Pacific Culture Fest on May seventh, two thousand and twenty-two.
What the mayor said. Uh, subject to validation of the nonprofit status for this fiscal year, fiscal year uh twenty-one.
We allow, we allow for, I'm sorry, we allow for fiscal agents, right? So if they're, they don't have their status, they can have a fiscal agent accept the funds for them.
Thank you, Councilmember Wen. That is a... Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Wen. That, that is a good point. Sometimes they work with another entity and we, we would generally accept that as well. And that may be the case here.
That is exactly what the case is. Yeah. So it's, it's going to go through the Asian Bar Law Foundation.
That's right. Yeah, that's my understanding as well.
All right. So we have a motion.
A second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. All right, next up, item nine point two, receive and file the Elk Grove Aquatic Center annual report for twenty twenty-one. All right, welcome.
Oh, good evening, councilmembers. It's been so long that I've stood here. I wasn't sure I could see over the podium.
You're much taller in person, Lana.
I, I like to, to make a big presence. Lana Yoshimura, Community Event Center Manager for the City of Elk Grove. I'm very happy to, uh, be here to present the twenty twenty-one, uh, Elk Grove Aquatic Center Annual Report. Um, as the council knows, we opened the aquatic center in May of twenty nineteen, and it's had some challenges since its inception due to COVID. Um, so, you know, it, uh, has definitely had some impacts and we're looking forward to having a great summer this summer. Um, our report covers January through December of twenty twenty-one. Um, because our fiscal year sits in the middle of what is our busiest season. We go calendar year versus fiscal year. So I just want to call your attention to that fact. Um, and want to introduce Mike Dobson, the Director of Recreation and Community Services for the Community, the Sumnis Community Services District, our partner in this to, um, continue with the presentation.
Excellent. Uh, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Singh Allen, Vice Mayor Soon, uh, and members of the city council. Uh, as Lana said, I'm Mike Dobson. Recreation and Community Services Director for the Sumnis C S D, uh, here to talk tonight about, uh, the twenty twenty-one annual report for the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. Uh, prior to my report, I do want to give, uh, some huge kudos to Lana with whom both myself and my staff routinely interact with. Um, she's been truly a great ambassador with us in this partnership with timely communication, a progressive mindset and global problem solving. Um, so this first slide, we have kind of the program overview. Uh, with typical aquatic center, we have rec swim, swim lessons, uh, some camps. Um, a variety of water fitness classes, which I'm going to talk a little more depth about, uh, as well as a lot of training components. Um, we try and offer, um, a variety of things, um, that one would expect at Aquatic Center, as well as make it somewhat specialized. Um, so Lana, Lana did mention in twenty twenty-one, we were still kind of maneuvering through parts of the pandemic. Uh, I did want to highlight, um, some of the revenues and the participation numbers. Um, obviously with some of those, some of those aspects due to the pandemic, they weren't as high as we had originally hoped. Um, I do want to let the council know that, uh, from the district, we were operating under a fiscal contingency plan. Um, for everything that we did, including everything that we operated as far as the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. Um, so with this, we wanted to limit expenditures to help offset some of the decreases in revenue that we kind of knew we were going to see. Um, you know, we provided as many programs as we possibly could to the public, uh, tried to capitalize on revenue and limit spending. Uh, all while keeping in constant communication with the city staff. So we had a joint unified message going out to the public. Um, so with that, as you see, we still had a really good recreational swim season. Um, you know, seeing over thirty thousand participants, um, swim lessons, um, we had some challenges with. Limitations at that time with some COVID restrictions. We got really creative to still offer that under kind of those guidelines. Um, you know, we had Camp Junior Guard, some summer camps that we were able to, uh, have. The summer camp, I do want to point out, I don't think was aquatics related. Um, and summer camp was one of those, I guess, areas of allowance that was easier to navigate with the COVID restrictions. Um, so since we were operating that at many of our facilities, we all, we also wanted to offer it at the Elk Grove Aquatic Center to help, um, with some of that revenue. Um, and then lifeguard training and then, uh, some for fitness, which is just kind of our lap swim program. Uh, you'll see a slide specifically dedicated to water fitness. Um, you have some really unique components as far as water fitness as aqua boards, bikes. Um, so you see, you know, high levels of participation numbers, uh, with those in either the aqua swim, swim and stretch. Um, you know, being outdoors, having a year-round facility, uh, exercise being one of those many outlets that the community members look for and needed during this time. We saw a lot of success and growth in these areas. Um, you know, to further promote that, you see maybe the second to last. Line where we had, we called our demo days, and that's where we invited out the community to try classes for free. That you kind of saw there to see which ones they might or might like, and then later kind of sign up for. Uh, overall, by the numbers, uh, as you see, for the calendar year of twenty twenty-one, um, you know, we saw over forty-two thousand participants. Uh, and had revenue of a little over five hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. Uh, pool parties and rentals. So like I said, you know, we mentioned, we did have some difficulties. Um, this was one of the areas, again, that we weren't unfortunately not able to offer last summer. Um, you know, particularly due to limited staffing, uh, much like many other businesses in Elk Grove. Um, we did see some staffing shortages, especially in the part-time area. Uh, because of this, some of the gathering limitations, uh, the sanitation for high-touch surfaces and the ongoing cleaning, um, unfortunately, we just weren't able to allow those. Um, I do want to point out, too, like these, both of these things would be something that we would normally have at all of our facilities, and we didn't have it at any of them last year as well. So. We have very highly trained staff, um, you know, certified and trained to the highest standards. Uh, last summer or last year. Uh, we had about a hundred and twenty-two lifeguards in total. Um, for all of the programs, um, for us to operate, we need about a hundred and eighty. So as you can see from that slide, we had about two-thirds, which kind of the aforementioned slide is some of the reasons why we weren't able to do that. Um, we are very fortunate. We have a lot of lifeguard training instructors, and those are the people that train the lifeguards. Um, most agencies have one to maybe two or three. Um, we've grown this program over the years, myself and a number of our staff, our instructor trainers. So we can train those people to do that. Um, this did allow for us, when we had any new staff that would come in, uh, we had a number of staff that could train them to try and get them hired right away. Um, you know, we have a, a number of pool and facility operators that, even as this last month has grown, more of our maintenance. And, uh, program staff went and got that certification. And then you'll notice the last two, the exercise and the Body Strong Water Exercise. Um, so we have a number of staff certified in those. With additional specialized certifications, which kind of allows for us to kind of teach all that diverse, uh, water exercise that we offer. Uh, so any facility is not without the challenges. Uh, EGAC was no different. Um, some, some of the challenges we saw this last year, um, you know, there was effects to the heater in the pool vacuum. Uh, associated with dust and dirt from the construction of the preserve. Um, preserve looks beautiful. Um, so it was just kind of. Necessary evil in that sense that, um, it just had to happen. Um, shower in the sinks had temperatures that had delays in heating, which have been resolved. Uh, broken hinges on some of the entrance gates from both overuse and overextended. Um, you know, working with staff. Um, we've managed to make some additions to those to mitigate that. Uh, there was a crack in the slide. Uh, which has now been reported repaired under warranty. Uh, the slide pump shorted out and was replaced. And there was flaking from the trellis, which is currently being addressed by Public Works. Uh, some of the other challenges from an operational standpoint, um, as I previously mentioned, um, you know. Uh, we've had limited year-round part-time staffing and had, uh, a lot of. Full-time staffing backfilling that, those positions so we can still offer programs. Um, you know, we've, like I said, to help mitigate that, we have moved to more of a year-round recruiting and. Um, for all of our programs, just whenever we can find someone to work part-time, we want to get that person in and hired as quickly as possible. Um, you know, we had to implement some new cleaning and policies around COVID. Um, you know, various times of the year, we were limited by program capacity, as well as at times we wanted to be mindful of what would be the public perception. Um, you know, and like I said, I want to read it right, you know, these were not specific to this one area. It was just kind of how we were operating at that time. Um, the accomplishments, um, so once again, um, even though there were some challenges, we did have a lot of great successes throughout the year. Uh, and I want to attribute that once again to Lana and Hurst Aff, um, you know, being able to work with us. As we kind of worked hand in hand navigating a lot of these things, as well as, you know, to an extent, uh, the Elk Grove Aquatic Center still being a new center. Um, we've hired, you know, a new full-time supervisor, um, and now just recently a new, a new full-time coordinator. Um, you know, staff were able to attend virtual and in-person training. Um, it's very important that staff stay up on the newest and the greatest. Um, for us to be progressive when it comes to these programs, as well as deliver high levels of training. Um, we added, we had, like I said, we added summer camp for additional revenue. Uh, we saw a huge success in water fitness. Um, it's on here, like as a success, as far as the Bill Rose Classic, although, you know, we just kind of staffed that event. Um, the city and Lana staff really were the ones that, um, deserve all the kudos for that, as well as the partnership for the Elk Grove Unified School District. Uh, and then I mentioned again, like I said, those demo days, um, which water fitness was our greatest area of growth, and I think those helped along with that.
So we have a very, uh, unique partnership with C S D and the way that we are funded. So what you're looking at is the expenses for twenty twenty, twenty-one. Because we do lap over the fiscal year. C S D is paid through professional services. Any revenue that they make, they keep. And they, um, off, and we offset any overages, um, as part of a subsidy. So in the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which would have ended June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Um, we were slightly over our anticipated subsidy by about seven thousand five hundred dollars, which is pretty good, to be honest with you. And I will say that it was an unusual year, twenty twenty-one. We were still coming, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, we're still coming off of COVID. So, you know, we had decreased expenses, we had decreased revenue, and to be only, um, over by about seven thousand dollars, I think is a great win. And speaks a lot to what C S D did in terms of their, um, fiscal contingencies. Uh, for the current fiscal year that we are in, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Um, this is as of March thirty-first, um, and we are about to come into our big spending season. So right now, we're in the midst of onboarding staff. We're making purchases. Um, we consider aquatic season to start Memorial Day weekend, which is in May. So as we're preparing for May, these expenses will go up. Um, so we are about halfway, a little under halfway through the budget at this point. We are seeing really good returns from the user group revenues. These are the swim teams that participate, the piranhas and the gators, who are our home teams, as well as several of the meets that we have coming in. We have worked hard to try to recruit, um, larger meets to try to balance out the public participation with bringing in, uh, economic development to the city. So we're trying to balance those things out and do have several meets coming this summer, which will be very exciting. So moving on to summer twenty twenty-two, um, summer swim lessons are open for registration. This is a very popular program for C S D. Anyone in recreation will tell you that swimming is a life skill and that we think it's important that people learn how to swim. C S D, to their credit, is starting a program called Making Waves that we are sponsoring, and it basically offers swim lessons to low-income, um, children who might not have access. It also provides them to equipment. So swim trunks or bathing suits, towels, goggles. The Making Waves will make it more accessible for people who are possibly in lower incomes to access swimming and have that, um, knowledge. So we're looking forward to hosting that this summer. Uh, pool party reservations are currently being accepted. So if you are looking forward to, um, a really fun. Easy way to get your kids out and have a good time, the Elk Grove Aquatic Center, as well as Blackford, offer pool parties. Our rec swim, which is our open swim, opens Saturday, May twenty-eighth. Uh, we are hoping for a great summer. Um, our inflatable obstacle course named Shipwrecked will be back. Um, I don't know if any of you have ever had the pleasure of doing Shipwrecked, but it is quite fun. Um, and it is probably one of my favorite things to watch people try and transverse it. It's like watching, um, that game show in person.
Lana, that's with all the big inflatables on the pool, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
There's like a swinging thing with a rope that you have to cross. It's pretty, that's how I spend my lunch sometimes. And this summer, we are bringing several large meets to the Elk Grove Aquatic Center, including the Meet of Champions, which is at the end of July, and the Western Zone Long Course Championship in August. Um, the Western Zone is extremely exciting and because it brings seventeen leagues from the Western United States. So most leagues, um, have about five to ten teams. So we're expecting a thousand swimmers at least to come into the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. They're very excited to be here. Um, we actually have a meeting next week to discuss it. So we are looking forward to hosting the Western Zone Long Course Championship in August and hope that all of you will stop by and visit. That kind of concludes the report. Mr. Dobson and I are here to take any questions that you might have about the Elk Grove Aquatic Center or, uh, swimming in general.
Thank you so much for that excellent, excellent report. I'll, uh, turn to my right. Any questions?
I do, I actually have questions. Um, so I love the fact that we're going to bring, um, some swim meets here, but my concern is, are we going to. Make sure that we leave room for the public to be able to come in? Because I, I had a lot of complaints, and I'm sure you heard it too, where they wanted to bring their kids to come swim, but it was always closed for swim meets. And so we're making it a community pool. We want to make sure that our community can be able to utilize it as well, too. So while we're, um, booking these meets, I want to also keep in mind the community members who are really excited about utilizing the aquatic center.
That, that's an excellent point, um, council member, and I am very sensitive to making that balance between public usage as well as bringing in economic development. So with the swim teams, what I've basically done is, so when we have, we're allowed to have two meets a, oh, a month. So there are two weekends that go to the public, two weekends that go to, um, the swim teams. For the piranhas meets, which are considered dual meets, they basically happen part of the day. C S D does program swim, um, open swim in the evenings for families. So as long as we're planning ahead of time, families do have the opportunity to do those in the evenings. For some of the larger meets, for example, the Western Zone. Those meets run pretty much from six AM to seven PM every day. Um, but you're also bringing in swimmers from throughout the US. I have been contacted about doing another meet in July. I turned them down. Um, you know, I was like, we, we are at capacity at this point. I will not ever close the pool for swim meets more than I open it to the public. That's not fair to the tax base that's here. That's not fair to the residents that are here, and I always am mindful of that fact.
Thank you. And then do some of the swim teams use the facility for practice as well, too? Does that interfere with the public being able to use it? Did you answer that question?
It's always a balance between the two. So it's one of those things where the swim teams bring in over two hundred thousand dollars in revenue every year to the facility, which offsets the subsidy. So. And when you look at swim team use, it's kind of like a guaranteed rental. When we're running lap swim or an open swim program, there's no guarantee that you're going to have somebody fill all eighteen lanes of those. So would you rather those lanes go to, um, possibly sit open and vacant and not making any revenue, or go to a swim team who's going to pay for those? So what we do is that we try to balance it out. Um, most of the year, we're running. Several lanes that are open for either deep, um, water aerobics or lap swim in the competition pool, because that is where we segment the, um, the swim teams to. The lower pool, the larger of the, the fifty-meter pool. Um, so we give them the fifty-meter water. We have public programming that happens in Castaway Cove, which is a twenty-five-meter pool on the upper deck. Um, during the day, we run lap swim classes. We run different programming. So we try to balance those things out between the two. Um, we also make sure that the swim teams have time, like in the morning. So if we can't accommodate them in the evenings because we're running programming, for example. Summer gets very dicey for us because swim teams want a lot of water. The piranhas team swells to about three hundred and thirty swimmers during the summer. The gators are at about one thirty to one fifty, and then we have all of this public programming.
Mm-hmm.
And so we try to make sure that we balance those out. So the piranhas will start as early as five AM. And we'll get them out of the water as quickly as possible so that we can transition into rec swim and then swim lessons. And so we're maximizing the use of the pool. So.
Okay, okay. Yeah, sounds good. And then lastly, for, um, opening day, I wanted to see if my colleagues want to join me. I'm going down the slide one more time this year.
I wasn't there when you did that dive in your dress, but that's all you, sister.
I think we have to add the, the, the obstacle course in there as well, but only if Councilmember Wen does her famous dive off the, off the high dive.
I'm, I'm all for that obstacle course.
Maybe we can, uh, compete with C S D.
Yes, that, that sounds fun, actually. Um, since you have the microphone, Vice Mayor.
Thank, thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to continue off of, uh, Councilmember Wen's comments and, um, say to you, Lana, you must be, um, the best mom ever. Being able to balance the needs of both, um, just proverbial or figuratively children, um, we, that we both love. Our piranhas and our gators, piranhas, our rec team, very large, uh, rec team, uh, and then our gators, who are that competitive team that. You know, the next Michael, Michael Phelps, you know, may, may come out of that. And so to nourish that. Um, the economic development sure is a, is a, a great part as well, bringing in teams from all over, like the Bill Rose Classic, the AKA Junior Olympics here. Uh, bringing teams from all over the, the country to, to stay at hotels and eat at our, our restaurants. teams from all over the, the country to, to stay at hotels and eat at our restaurants. But those are our kids still on the, on the gators as well, that are competing at a really high level. And if, if they're able to expand that, that increases the chances that there'll, there'll, there'll be more of them excelling at, at higher levels. And so they all need to work together, and I know you're making that happen, but what, it's a great problem to have, honestly. I, I love the fact that, you know, we've got a great, a community that loves swim, that loves to compete at a high level, and they, you know, they love using the facility that, you know, our residents are, are paying for. So all that is fantastic, but it creates a little bit of a challenge, and I really want to commend both of you, you know, our CSD and, and our city staff, the, the partnership that we have with the CSD, we, we value very much. And again, commending you both for, for your work in, in that regard. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hume?
Yeah, let me start by saying that that inflatable course is not as easy as it looks.
Well, it's not.
And it doesn't look easy.
Soft landing, though, maybe.
Oh, it's a soft landing. You got to swim to the side, though. It's the, the swim of shame at that point. But I just wanted to thank you both for the excellent job. I mean, this is one of the best amenities in the region, as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, just, it, it exudes energy, even when it's not being used, and the music is just blaring over the loudspeakers, and it just has a vibrancy to it. But, you know, in, in thinking about it, is there a possibility, you know, if I'm looking at the picture that's on our screen up here, you know, with the, where the slides are in the, in the lazy river area, and then what you called the cove up at the top, and even just the inflatable portion of the pool, that still leaves a whole lot of, of competition-grade pool available for practice and meets and things. Are we able to have it open for two different purposes at the same time?
We, we do.
Okay.
So usually, if the, let's say, the piranhas and the gators are practicing, they're using all eighteen lanes in the competition pool. And then in the Castaway Cove, we're running swim lessons, we're running aerobics, we're running aquaspin, we're running everything that we can possibly run at the same time. The slide pool, as you call it, or Treasure Island, as we call it, is not heated. So sometimes, like, we don't often run that during the winter season.
Yeah.
Some people like a polar bear plunge, not me, but, you know, some people do enjoy that. We have not found that to be the case. But the amount of lap swimmers we have in December is, is telling that people are willing to get in the heated pool, and then they got to get out. And I'm like, it's thirty degrees out here. No way. But we do try to maximize use as much as we can. Mr. Dobson's staff is very creative, and what we've actually done right now is for the piranhas, who are bringing on what we call their littles, so they're introductory swimmers. We have aquaspin on one side of the Castaway Cove, and they're using, from the steps, swimming vertically versus horizontally. So we're maximizing the sat, that half of the pool as well, to make sure that we're acclimating them to the water. Because if you're stepping into the competition pool, which starts at seven feet, that can be very intimidating to an entry-level swimmer. So we're maximizing that and getting them used to it. We try to maximize space as much as possible. If we can use water at any point, we try to. This weekend, we're running the Sierra Nevada Select Camp there. They only need nine lanes of time, so we are running lap swim and adjacent to them. So we're making sure that we're getting a paying customer plus the public in at the same time, wherever we possibly can. The difficult part is, like, when you're running large meets, they're using every single space. So they're using the entire competition pool for competition, and then you're, you're using Castaway Cove on the upper deck for warm-ups or warm-downs, right? And then they have vendors on the deck, and so it becomes a different type of dynamic. So it becomes difficult to run the public participation part during those larger meets.
Okay, maybe we have to open up the, the pond down in the preserve and just.
I, I will leave that to you, Councilmember, to do first. I'm afraid of geese.
Yeah, good, as you should be.
Excellent, excellent report. You know, I, the Vice Mayor and I had an opportunity to go to the Bill Rose Classic, and we could see how every part of the facility was being used. And I really, really appreciate the balanced approach that you're taking in terms of meeting the economic development needs, but of course, first and foremost, our community needs. With the Natomas Aquatic Center Park, whatever that it's called, I imagine that's going to be obviously a, a pretty big economic driver as well. And now that we're creating this competition within the region, some of these big competitive events and meets will have options in the region. But I still hope that we are staying proactive, that we don't lose those opportunities, because there is a competitor now in the field ten, twelve miles away. So just to, you know, because it does bring in a significant amount of revenue for the hotels and the restaurants and all of the other supportive industries as, as we look to, to plan this out, to keep that obviously in mind, that we do now have competition, as of, I think, a week ago or a few days ago. So thank you for that. And I think, and then a little bit about the, the Whackford, how much of, you know, the, the driving needs, you know, we do have another site here in our city. So how much, you know, can, can you talk a little bit about that, that those that can't participate here? We do have an entire other facility that the community can enjoy.
Yes. So what, what we try and do is, I guess, not completely duplicate services at each, while, you know, while the Elk Grove Aquatic Center has a very large water fitness, you know, during those times, we might, we, we might try and get maybe some more lap swims. So we, we want to try and provide the community with a good balance, as well as options, while not trying to, I guess, necessarily compete with each other. In the summertime, there, you know, based on user groups and kind of maybe parent schedules, there, there are certain things that will overlap, like, there'll, there'll always be swim lessons in the morning and the evening, just because of, like I said, a lot of, a lot of, especially for parents, a lot of schedules.
Right.
As well as rec swim during sometimes the courses of the day. Off the top of my head, I don't believe we have a completely matching schedule. I think Whackford opens a little later than the Elk Grove Aquatic Center. But we also, we also want to be mindful, since we do live in Sacramento, it does get very hot.
Yeah.
To not have it too late at the hottest part of the day.
Right.
Which might seem counterintuitive, but when it's a hundred and five, not a lot of people want to come out. So, so, yeah, we, we, you know, we work with Lana, and we have like a lot of years of experience in trying to try and balance with both Whackford, the Elk Grove Aquatic Center, and at times Fox, which is the, the smaller pool in Elk Grove Park, to, to give, to provide all of it for the community. So we, we look at it not by facility, but by one large collective aquatics program. So, and we do that with staffing and everything else. It, we just see it as another facility that we operate and not, we don't really program like just by facility, if that makes sense, but by what makes the most sense for the community and as, as well as, you know, where we can generate revenue as well.
All right, great. Well, thank you both for that excellent presentation. And Mr. Dobson, please give my regards to your better half.
I will.
An amazing educator. Thank you. All right, our, next is our council comments, reports, and future agenda items. I'll start with Councilmember Winn.
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Hume?
Yeah, I had an RT meeting, nothing to report from that. Had a San Joaquin Stations Facilities Committee meeting, nothing to report from that. The Connector JPA meets this Friday. And then relative to council comments, I just want to address an issue that came up this last week, a little dust-up with the Arts Commission. And I appreciate the email that was sent out over the mural project. And while I, I can sympathize with the sentiment of the, of the email, I think that the, the process is probably what rubbed people the wrong way, in that it is a city project, it is arts-related, and there was not consultation with the Arts Commission. There was a presentation of this is what we've decided to do and how it's going to go down. Then that was further exacerbated by the fact that, you know, many of these murals are going to be put in the Old Town Special Planning Area, which has restrictions that a, in a individual business would have to jump through considerable hoops to do exterior changes to their business. And yet, the city comes in and sidesteps and seems to be laying out the red carpet for themselves. So I, I just, I'd like the opportunity to talk offline, but I just want to say that I think that this was probably, the delivery was as, as problematic as, you know, it's going to be a great thing for the city at the end of the day, but it just, it, it struck people the wrong way. And so I just, I'd like the opportunity to talk about that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, soon?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, so I'll start off with that. I, I also heard comments about that, and probably not as much detail as you did, Councilmember Hume, but I would also like to see how, if there's a way to, to ensure that local artists are, are part of that program. Because we started, you know, when we started promoting the arts in the city, we, we were trying to tap the, the folks that we have right here. There's a lot of talent right here in the city. So to the extent that we can maximize that, I, I think that, that should be a strong consideration. So welcome future dialogue on that, on that matter as well. And then finally, just, we had a, we had a SECOG board, board meeting, but nothing to report this time. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just chime in on those comments as it relates to the arts. Wide Open Walls is a, is an amazing international festival that draws in hundreds of thousands of people in the city of Sacramento. So I look forward to having continued dialogue, but I am pretty confident that our staff and the commission, you know, will be on the same page soon. I, I get some of the procedural issues, but Wide Open Walls is, is definitely, for those that aren't familiar with it, I definitely encourage you to check it out, that it is, it's more than just a mural. It, it truly is a festival that draws people from everywhere. And anybody who's been through downtown, you can see some amazing artwork from international, national, and some local artists that are featured in downtown Sacramento. So it's my hope that we would have local and a mix of great talent, just to put Elk Grove on the map for arts. It's not something we're always known for, but this is certainly some of those amazing first steps. But in, while the reporting items, Councilmember Spies and I presented with Leadership Elk Grove, which was hosted by the chamber, had an excellent meeting and discussion with Airbnb with Chief Davis. So that, that was very productive. The STA, Sacramento Transportation Authority Executive Director search is, is officially open. The city hosted Congressman Ami Barra to thank him for the five hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the Arctic Center. Do we call it the center? I don't know.
Time Information Center, yeah.
Yeah, the, the center. So I think I'm saying center twice. Anyways, for Arctic, for those that may not know, Real-Time Information Center, something like that.
Yes.
Anyways, but it was great. It was also an opportunity to advocate for additional funding for other important projects for our city. Regional Sand this morning, and a number of us will be going to CAP to CAP, to not only advocate for different needs for our city, which I'm looking forward to, leading a delegation as, as a co-chair for the 50th anniversary for CAP to CAP. It's an excellent opportunity for the community, business leaders, and elected officials to come together and truly advocate for various needs in our city. And a shout-out to our Economic Development Director, who is leading on our transfer, economic development team, along with a number of others. So I look forward to seeing a number of my colleagues in Washington, DC. And last, District 56 did host the World Conference for the Baha'i Faith, and I had an opportunity to speak there, and there were, gosh, I couldn't even guess, three, four hundred people that attended, at least the local one here, from our region, and just tremendous comments regarding District 56 and the facility. So it was well-attended, and they really loved everything that they saw, because some of, a lot of them were new to District 56. And with that, I will go ahead and adjourn our meeting. It is 7:47. Have a great evening, everyone.